I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Can I have a roll call?
Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of our public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That would be pretty. We have no public hearing, but we do have a guest today. Beverly Lynn McDonald is here from the SBA, and she's going to talk to us. Yeah, please.
Hi, my name is Beverly Lynn McDonald. I'm with the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance, which is totally different than the average SBA, Small Business Administration. We actually provide low-interest disaster-related loans. Our loans are based upon your actual damages, okay? Our loans start at 1.6% interest rate. We do homes, renters, as well as businesses, for-profit businesses as well as nonprofit businesses. Our homes can go up to $200,000 for the structure and $40,000 for your personal property or contents. Those loans are basically based upon not only your actual loss, but as well as any uninsured, uncompensated loss, okay? When it comes to your renters, we give personal property or content loans, okay? Of course, they can't, you know, apply for the structure, but they can apply for their personal property. The personal property can even include a damaged vehicle, as long as the vehicle was lost due to the disaster, and that is at the 1.6% interest rate as well, okay? Our business loans can go up to $4 million, excuse me, it's 4% interest rate, $2 million, okay? And that can include anything totally related with the day-to-day business of the actual business, any uninsured, uncompensated loss, from the structure to your furniture and fixtures, your inventory, et cetera, as long as it pertains to the day-to-day business, okay? When it comes to a business owner that does not have business interruption insurance, we provide an economic injury loan, which basically includes anything in overhead, which is your vendors, as well as your employees, although your business has suffered a loss due to the disaster, whether the business was totally shut down, or let's say the road was obstructed, couldn't get, you know, your customers didn't have the right-of-way, this is what the economic injury. If you did not have business interruption insurance, the economic injury loan will fall into place. We also do nonprofits, okay? The federal government classifies nonprofits into categories, critical and non-critical, okay? We ask that you also put in an application with the state when you apply for a nonprofit organization. Nonprofit organizations can be your soup kitchens, your homeless shelters, maybe a school, if it's a private school, okay? Even museums, art galleries, it all depends. This is the reason why we category two, critical and non-critical, okay? And those are 2.8% interest rate. You can also get an economic injury as far as a nonprofit is concerned because you were shut down and you still have to pay your vendors, and let's say your charitable contributions were not coming in like they normally do due to the disaster, then the economic injury loan falls into place as well, okay? Any questions? Wow, I guess I did good. Okay, have a good day. Thank you. I'll leave some pamphlets over here for you.
Oh, good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a comment that they'd like to make? Would anyone like to pull something from the consent agenda? All right, no response, let's move to the consent agenda. Would any of the trustees like to pull something from the consent agenda?
Item C.
Randy? C?
The ordinance number 1303.
Yes? Number what?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were still listening to him.
No, I got a question about one of the bills again. Okay. Well, let's move ahead then and approve the minutes, and then we'll deal with these two items, B and C. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
Tom and I second.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
There are no resolutions or other business, so let's move on to dealing with the consent items that were pulled, starting with item B. Mr. Dobbs.
Well, last meeting I asked a question about the payment to Farnsworth of $5,000, and was told that was the final payment of our contract. I just noticed this month there's a payment of $20,000 to them, and I was just, if last month was the final payment, why did we pay them another $20,000?
Going to defer to Craig Lattimer.
Yeah, the last one was the, was the original contract for the final plan, which Farnsworth fulfilled that contract obligation, I think it's $20,625. That was the additional that was spent. If you remember the February 4th board meeting, there was a long discussion on the plaza at which, you know, we had a consensus, not a vote, but a consensus from the mayor to move forward with a second plan with the overall, the mayor directed this, the overall, and everybody agreed, was to come up with a second plan to reduce not only the cost, but the maintenance cost. So that money, that $20,000, was, that was spent during the timeframes of February 5th, the day after that meeting, through April 25th. So that was all under the past administration to come up with those dollars. The plan that we came up with saved approximately $600,000, so we came up with another option to be able to compare, and that's what the past board wanted to do, so that's where that money was from.
Okay, so there was two contracts, wasn't there?
No, there was one contract. The second was to proceed, it wasn't a contract, it was to proceed, to come up with a second plan. So we didn't come up with a budgeted amount, we started working on it. We had two, that was the same night that we appointed the committee, there was a subcommittee that was formed, of which Jeff Kaufman, trustee Kaufman, headed that, but all the board members could have volunteered to be on that, so it was Jeff, Randy, myself, Bruce Brown from Farnsworth, and...
Brad Breaker.
Brad Breaker. We had two, two subcommittee meetings, that was all kind of a part of this, to come up with this plan, to figure out a way to reduce costs, because ultimately, I think everybody was in a consensus for the final plan, but if you look back to that meeting, it was, the mayor spoke and said, "We have a fiduciary responsibility here to come up with another plan that will save us the ultimate construction costs and maintenance costs."
It's kind of a time and materials charge.
Seven more times.
It was a kind of a time and materials charge for the additional work.
Yeah, it was just proceed with getting this, you know, the second plan to come up with something. So we had, actually what came out of the subcommittee was a couple of plans, as we worked through that, and I'll let Jeff and Randy speak if they would like to, to add to this with me, and then two cost estimates. The original was in that 2.6 million range. These other plans, through our subcommittee meetings, we were able to get the preliminary estimate closer to $2 million, so savings of $600,000.
And a lot of this was also driven by the fact that trustee Kaufman was actually able to point out that the, a lot of the grading work that was going to have to be done, that we may have to try to redesign and relook at that, so it was a, part of it was a cost issue, going back to the drawing board to see if we could figure out a way to do it more cost-effectively, and that was one of the big concerning issues that evening, correct? When we started looking at the details of the plan, of going, hey, just the...
The amount of dirt we're going to haul in to make that platform, so the subcommittee looked at the leading one step of the platform, we discovered that the original plan showed eight-inch-thick concrete everywhere, where we could change it to four. We decided to make one building instead of two, just make one larger toward the fence, and then we looked at the water features, how we were draining them, so in, all the features were in the same plan, rearranged slightly, but everything was there, and it was a minimum of $600,000 savings.
I think everyone, everyone on the pass board supported the final plan, but with that, the final plan was all the components through the whole process that the community wanted. From there, then we decided to take that back and come up with a comparison cost and try to reduce some of those, and in that timeframe, we met, myself and Bruce met with the part district, you know, on some of the maintenance and some of those, so there was a lot of work and a couple meetings in there to try and fine-tune that, to come up with the costs for a comparison.
And really, the only second drawing out of that was during that timeframe, we thought we might have purchased another piece of property, so we took that into consideration of that plan a little bit.
Exactly.
And then, all that fell through, we had the cost savings, so if the plaza would end up there tomorrow, we know we could save $600,000 with any luck with bidding, hopefully with the amount of work out there, we could save more, so, I mean, it is less than $2 million down Plaza now, so, and that was our main task, to look at the cost.
Well, I'm kind of confused now, where is the plaza? Because you announced the meeting, we got sworn in that it's moved, and this study was for where it was, I guess.
Correct.
So this is no longer, was no longer needed then?
That was, that was already done, but the reason, we looked at another site, one of them, we had public, private funds available and some ideas how to do that, and the second thing was, it fell through on purchasing the other two pieces of property, so...
And no monies have been spent on the new, the new site that we discussed, this is all the past.
Those are proposals, not...
And it still sits there, ready for some direction from this board on how to move forward. All that stuff still sits there, we had the plan, we have the estimates, it's waiting on some direction, how to, how to move forward from there.
You could still tear out Washington Street and do the plaza, or you could buy more property and do what this plan has, so, I mean, if you ended up going back to that site, a lot of, oh yeah, this is nothing wasted, all that money is well spent. I mean, we spent 20 and we saved 600, so if it ends up there, which, you know, change of heart and of the board and buy a piece of property, you could probably do it, or just take out Washington Street, so that's all up for...
I won't dispute the value of having done it, though I don't understand how it saves us money if we've abandoned that site, but what I'm sort of troubled with is how a committee can just go spend $20,000. I had been advised by Mr. Davies that contracts of that size had to come before the board, and we couldn't spend that kind of money unless at least four trustees voted for it, and we just get a bill for $20,000. I still can't figure out who approved it, and I guess you can say, "Well, it's time and materials, well then, let's, don't have contracts, let's just do time and material."
And I discussed that with Mr. Davies, too, and, you know, I encourage him to watch that meeting again and everybody else, but on the, as far as from where I'm at, in my defense, was that night, we discussed it, and that's what the mayor wanted to do, and had full support of the board. I know it was not voted on, but I took that as a consensus to move forward and start working with Farnsworth to come up with a second plan.
I took it as a time and material bid, because I had already seen their, approximately what their costs are, how they're building through their other things, so I knew we had their hourly rates and different things, so we had that cost, and it was a time and material, you know, that's the way it decided. We didn't know how much we were going to spend, and we were very conservative.
Your Honor.
Yes?
I went back and I watched that meeting again also, and the mayor at that time said we, we talked about the plan, we had input from the attendees, but he said, "We recognize that these additional costs for the second plan, that there will be additional costs for the second plan, and we accept that." And none of the board members at that time objected to that statement, nor did the attorney that was present that night, but also understanding the appropriation, maybe there, it was a little sloppy and we should have taken, voted, voted on that, but there were no objections at that time for the potential cost savings.
I still don't see how it saves money, but, and I still don't see how you can do it. I mean, just because somebody said, "Yeah, we know this is going to cost more," you can't go out and spend $20,000 without an approval of this board. And two, I talked to Tom Davies about this, you're all going to get a memo tomorrow from him explaining how we have to do these things in the future. We can't be spending money like that without approval. I can't spend that money. I can't go to Craig and say, "Here, get an engineer and dittle with this." Four of us have to decide to do this, or it's just not going to happen anymore, and so Davies has put together a nice document explaining how this is supposed to be done, explaining what we're supposed to do, and I hope everybody reads it carefully tomorrow. If they've got any questions, you can call Tom Davies.
If any blame accrues, Mr. Mayor, it's to the trustees. We had the opportunity at that meeting to speak, and we all, and I agree that, looking back, we may have been better served by defining, trying to define the cost, but at that point we weren't, well, I won't try to defend it, but I think if there's any blame to be assessed, it's not village staff. The work was directed, and we had a response from a responsible organization in good faith, they were serving the village, we owe the money, so if there's, if there's a problem, I think it lays at the doorstep of the, of the trustees.
I appreciate the comment. We, we all get kind of carried away with our projects sometimes, and I think that may be what's happened here. I just think it's a good idea for us all to take a look at what we're supposed to be doing and make sure we do it right in the future. Mr. Dobbs, does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, if we owed the company the money and they did the work, we got to pay them, I mean, but...
Yeah, I think we do. Actually, Mr. Davies said this contract is null and void because it was never voted on, but I would be hard-pressed to not pay Farnsworth for the effort.
And to supplement that, technically you have zero legal liability to pay this bill because it wasn't approved in advance by the board, but you do have the opportunity and the option under Illinois law to what's called ratify the expense, which is prove it after the fact that it's been incurred, and by doing so, you would then take the legal liability to pay the bill. But if, if you chose not to pay it and Farnsworth chose to sue, they would not have the legal entitlement to recovery.
Well, I would choose the right thing to do and pay the bill. There are hours, and are all stated on the bill, there's no, there's no, they did the work, they were very conservative on their hours, we were very careful not to try to spend any more than we had to, they did a fine job.
I'll entertain a motion to pay it, to pay all the bills.
I move.
Who moved? Is that you, Sam? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Newhouse. Call or roll?
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Item C on the consent agenda is an ordinance. The administrator and I, and Mr. Davies have been working on a new procurement ordinance so that we can seek competitive bidding on, not only on projects, but equipment and services. You have a copy of this, this is the first reading, I'd like everyone to kind of have an opportunity to study it, give me a call, or, or call the administrator if you, if you've got some comments, or call Mr. Davies if you have questions. Randy, did you have a question?
Yes, on the first page of the ordinance, paragraph B, it lays out the spending limits, and it refers to the cost not to exceed $10,000, but then later in the paragraph at the very end, the last sentence goes on to state, "$20,000 is the threshold amount for public works." I was just looking for some clarity there.
The wording's not very good. Our rationale was, 10,000, which by the way is the limit that Chicago uses themselves for, for bidding, seemed reasonable for a lot of things that we do, but when we looked at a public works, I would call it a civil project, would that be a good description?
Sure, yes, a site project.
Where you're going to lay sewer or piping or something, the $10,000 is just simply too small for a project like that.
I, that makes sense.
So we thought for those kinds of projects, we'd make it 20, and we'll, I'll get with, with the public works administrator, and we'll come up with a better description of that.
Right now, as it is, I didn't know if that meant vehicles, equipment, across the board, anything, but I think that will clarify if we refer to it as, as project-related.
And you're exactly right, civil site-related, we do, and that 20,000, just under that, we do, do a lot of work with some local contractors in town, I won't name names here, but a lot of the locals allows us to do a lot of things, specifically in the stormwater department, we get a lot of things done that way, and really save us a lot of money, so...
Well, I thought a $10,000 civil project's a patch.
Yeah, exactly. So 20,000 for me is a, is a good number, and I asked for approval on, on that 20,000, because what happens if I come to the board and have to bid that out, it does become a lot more work for us to really get something that's fairly simple done.
I had a couple of questions also.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. How does this differ from, like, what is allowed by state statute in regard to bidding thresholds, et cetera?
I don't know.
Pan?
If I may, your honor.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Your default threshold by state law is $20,000 for public works contracts, and that can actually be waived by a three-fourth vote of your board, so supermajority can waive it. Your default standard is 20,000, over you bid it, under you don't have to, so it's actually, would be more restrictive than the default under state law in some ways.
We're allowed to be more restrictive if we wish.
Absolutely, yes.
And then, I think Craig may have answered my next question, which involved department heads using discretion in the field when they have to make choices, that, it was still within budget, but you have to make choices in the field, and this might go for all department heads, particularly public works, so I thought, would this hinder you in any way?
I did have a discussion with attorney Davies on that, because I do have a concern with that, and I was going to come to you guys separately, but we'll discuss it now if I could, but a lot of times, we do have some issues come up in the field, whether that be a designer or something, something of that nature, but we do need the flexibility to be able to do things right there on the fly, not only to avoid downtime charges from the contractor, but also trying to get residents back in their home and all those things, so one thing that I'll be looking for going forward is maybe try to, try to get some guidance from you guys on that. My preference would be a percentage of the contract to be able, have that flexibility. It's not that I'm going to keep you guys in the loop, it's just, to wait two weeks to get an approval just may not be an option if we've got, you know, sometimes time's of the essence to make a decision, so...
So...
I thought that didn't really, that's something separate from this, I think, but that's something I talked to attorney Davies about, maybe trying to clarify in the near future on a separate item, to figure out change orders and that on jobs while we're discussing everything.
My next question was change orders, so we're going to work that out, hopefully get the language, the clarification.
Yeah.
So as not to tie hands.
Exactly.
But, but to play by the rules. Thank you, that answers my questions.
Trustee Herman, and anyone else who has some ideas, please send them in, and we'll get Mr. Davies to write them all up, and we'll look at them and check with you, and see if we can't come up with something workable. It may very well be that 10,000's too low, we had some discussion about that, but I think since we're, we're just getting started and using it for some of these things, we can give it a try, and the trustees can always make a determination that it's too low, and we can raise it later, this way we'll, we'll get some experience with it.
Yeah, but I mean, I always, I always work just to add to that, under that budgeted amount, you know what I mean? So that would be even a separate thing, if the thing goes over budget, then that's a different item, but if, if I got a little play under that budgeted amount, I'm looking for a little flexibility just to be able to move the project forward, maybe if, even if I have a trustee or something that's, that's over some of my projects that I could communicate with or something, I'm just looking for some guidance from you guys on that.
We're good on guidance.
Appreciate that.
Anything else on this? This is the first reading.
Do we think about for a first reading? Then let's don't.
Village President, Resolution 113. The first resolution is supporting the Tazewell County Economic Development Committee. This is a resolution proposed by the, the county. We, I'm going to ask for passage with the understanding that Morton is not going to participate in any project or contribute any money in anything that we don't perceive to be in our best interest when the project comes up. Trustee Newhouse had helped me through this. Trustee Newhouse, would you care to make a few comments on this?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. As I understand the objectives, there is no financial obligation on the, on the part of the village. I served on the Tazewell County Comprehensive Plan Revision Committee two or three years ago, and some of these same kinds of issues came up during that discussion. They're relevant to, for the county, they're also relevant for Morton, as a matter of fact, you talk about the age 25 to 44 group, that's a, that's a problem area nearly every place, so the goals, I think, came out to some extent from the, I'm guessing, from the committee revision, but then with the further development by the county board and the, and the new county administrator. So I, I think they're relevant, I think they're, they are somewhat ambitious, based on my observation. I don't see any reason why we should not support them, with the understanding that we don't incur any financial obligation at this point, and, and the equal recognition, I think, that all of the communities are kind of looking at how we work together for the, for the good of the communities and the county, and there may or may not at some point be requests for funding. I don't know of any pending, and I think up to this point, we've probably had more support from the county to the village than the other way around, but I would support approval.
Any other questions?
I don't know if you need a second for bringing it out on the floor, but I did have some other...
Is that a motion?
Motion. I'll second it, to be able to discuss it.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, Steve, you might have probably addressed the main question that I had, and I think first of all, is any perceived or otherwise connection with funding on this? I mean, it is very ambitious, and I commend the committee, I know, just from what I've read and updates that we've been given or provided, I know there's been a lot of work, a lot of energy that's been put into this over the past year or so, so I know it's not been done without a lot of thought put to it, but that said, it is aggressive, and I, I guess I wanted to get a better sense of, here we are tonight, going on record to support something that, I, there's no dollars attached to it right now, what that, what that amount is to carry out this plan, and I guess, I feel a little uncomfortable with that, not knowing is, what is that going to come back to us in the form of dollar requests in the future, and then have this be held before us to show that we supported this five-year plan, and I guess, do we have some way to address that, or help us understand a little bit the connection there with the funding to carry out this plan versus our support of this tonight?
This whole FFCI is very confusing, and this is just yet another layer. This is in support only of Tazewell County's economic development effort, and because FFCI started this regional focus, Tazewell County felt that they also, this was a good opportunity for them to tie their economic development efforts into the regional, and that's all this is saying. It's not asking for money, the funding mechanism is going to come, it's not even for FFCI, it's the... not even for FFCI, it's the mechanism that will be Tazewell County's burden to pursue these goals and strategies and implement these goals and strategies. So that's all this part of it is. So it's just the layer below, this regional FFCI.
And the reason, I guess I bring that up too, is I think we might have caught it in the newspaper or in the news recently, the dollar amount that was associated with on an annual basis was $2.5 million to carry out the plan.
Well, that's for the whole regional thing.
Right, but if you just were to simply divvy that up on a headcount, per capita basis, it still is a sizable amount for county, for Tazewell.
Sure, but that, again, that is the region. We're only, this resolution is only...
Kim, when you say region, could you...
The five county area. So that's one section. And this resolution, we've been asked by Tazewell County to support their regional strategy, or their county strategy only.
So the board has already approved this, the county board?
No, not yet. Well, they've approved the goals. Now, what they have to approve is the strategy, which we have been working on for the last year. And we're actually rolling that out, the draft, this week, I think I have a meeting.
So the board has not voted on these goals yet?
The Tazewell County Board?
The board is looking for, to make sure that the municipalities in this area are actually behind this, before they're considering it. They want to see support too. They want us all to be on the same page since we're all, you know, in the same area. I think that that's kind of where they're coming from with it. I've sat in on, I've been part of this committee. There's never been any mention of money in the entire time that I've been there, so it's really just, we're trying to look at it, fit Tazewell County within that larger regional framework. And it's something that I think that we all realize Tazewell County needs to get involved maybe a little bit more.
So we won't be making a financial commitment or won't be assessed by approval just because we approved it?
Not because, no. Not because you're approving this. Basically, what you're looking at is you're looking at these goals and you're saying that you are in support of the goals. You're not saying that you were going to give any money to get anyone to these goals or anything.
My understanding has been that really the funding responsibility is the county, what they're looking for in an agreement, that these are the targets. And I think some of this is very closely tied to the CI forward movement that's replaced Heartland Partnership. So I don't know where all of these came from, but my understanding is that what they're looking for is our agreement that, yes, these look like good goals for the county. And as I said, I think they're relevant, but pretty ambitious in some cases. Good luck to them, but I don't think that, and I'm sure that in a number of ways, we will be helping contribute to those as new business comes in or as opportunities arise, but it doesn't include, doesn't include an expenditure on our part.
I think we can make sure that the minutes show that when we discussed this, we approved it and wanted to reevaluate it should any financial obligation occur.
Your Honor, when I read this, I was, I would just like a little background information on how they got these numbers. There's no background provided as to how and why. This is the recommendation.
Well, as Steve had said, or Trustee Newhouse had said, these are pretty ambitious numbers. I think someone, and I agreed with Trustee Newhouse, someone had sat down and said, boy, this would be really great if we could do this.
I know, but I'm not sure I want to vote on and approve something without at least having some background information on how they came up with these numbers.
Those numbers were provided, they did a mapping and an assessment and an analysis. That is why they brought in the consultant, Frank Knopf, from Vital Economy, to bring in what our threshold is today. And so, again, they have this whole big process for the five regions. And of those regions, based on the analysis and on the percentages of growth, Tazewell Counties were identified as these numbers. So these weren't numbers that we just picked out of the blue. These were numbers that were analyzed and looked at, and it's amazing, I mean, Peoria County has their numbers, Mason County has their numbers, Woodford County has their numbers. And so this is just a certain part of that whole measurement that we're making on part of the county. But based on ours, I mean, we were, we kind of talked about all of our municipalities, the rural municipalities, the urban municipalities, and brought all the numbers together, and then based on best practices for a region of our size, and those were what we were recommended.
What best background I was looking for.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, that helps.
Kim, just real quick, I'm sorry, does that also, I know we keep saying the word ambitious, but does that also reflect the state of where Tazewell County actually is and where it needs to be? So although we can say it's an ambitious goal to get here, we also probably have to look at it and realize where we are today.
Correct.
Fair enough.
Could we make that, I mean, we can have the minutes reflect, but should it be part of the motion that this is support but not a financial commitment, not to be pursued?
Trustee Newhouse, if you modify this motion.
I think that's perhaps what we did, but if we want to state it explicitly, I would recommend a move to approve with the understanding that there's no financial obligation from the community.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Are we ready? Call and roll.
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
The next one is the Creekwood Apartments request. You may recall that there is a developer from Chicago that's going to renovate the Creekwood Apartments, turn them into a nice area for senior citizens. We received a request from the developer asking that we would support their request to seek tax-exempt financing. We can do this, there will be no obligation at all to us, there's no financial participation from us. This is just us suggesting that this would be beneficial to our community, and I would like to get a motion to approve this.
So moved, Your Honor.
Sorry. Any discussion?
I'll just note, Your Honor, that they are, they're subsidized, housing their rates for seniors now, so I think this simply, all this does is allow the new developer to have the same tax-exempt status as the former, is the way I read that.
And I think we've done this before, so, yes.
Any more questions, comments?
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
The last one that I have is to change how we're dealing with the plazas. Right now, as I recall, the mayor appointed Jeff Kaufman to form a committee to see if we could cut costs on Plaza Number One. I think that the plazas now have become such an important issue that the entire board should be weighing in on this. We've spent $395,000 on Plaza One, and now we're moving to Plaza Two. What I would like to do is dissolve the ad hoc committee or the subcommittee that the mayor put together and ask that the entire board weigh in on this. To that end, I would like to call in the near-future special meeting where we met and just discussed this plazas, both of the plazas, so we can all speak up on it, each of the trustees can state their position on this, and we can have people from the public come in and state their positions, and we can get a kind of a fresh look at this. And I guess I'll defer to legal counsel here, but since this was never voted on in the first place, it seems to me that I can dissolve the committee.
Correct. If, since the original committee was not created by a board action, since committees are the kind of natural prerogative of the executive, I would tender the opinion that it is within your powers to dissolve without consent or approval of the board.
Done. Village Clerk?
Nothing tonight as clerk.
Village Administrator?
We have something as best. First of all, I am asking for approval to transfer $7,000 from the general fund and $1,500 from the water and the wastewater depreciation fund to capital projects. And again, this is to fund those capital projects that are going on in the village right now, such as infrastructure improvements, et cetera.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
The second item on my list is the resolution, it's an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Comptroller and the Village of Morton, and this is regarding access to the Comptroller's local debt recovery program. The Illinois Office of the Comptroller operates a system for the collection of debt owed to the state by people that would receive payments from the state. It could be payments such as tax refunds, lottery winnings, payroll checks. They're now offering that to local governments to help local governments recover money owed to them. And this program works by, say, we're any of the villages unable to collect a debt or collect on an account, and we've utilized our typical process for collecting without any result. We would submit this information to the state via a website that they've created. It's fairly simple to upload the information. The state matches any money owed to any dispersments to be made. They then send the debtor a letter explaining that there is a debt outstanding with the Village of Morton and that their dispersment is going to be reduced by that amount plus a certain percentage that the state takes on top of that, so the village wouldn't pay anything for this. And the debtor has 60 days to dispute the claim. After that, we will receive a deposit in our bank account, we mark their account paid, and we walk away. So I think our largest responsibility in this situation is ensuring that the accounts are reconciled so that a person that pays a debt is removed from the system, the state's system. That's kind of the biggest issue I think that they faced with this. But I don't expect our staff to have an issue with this. So, and they told me that I would expect to see the most activity taking place during the tax season, which is January through April, of course, when the tax refunds are being sent, but they can take, again, a lottery, like a lottery winning or a payroll check. So I think overall, this is a good thing for us. It's one more way for us to get money that is owed to us.
Would this be for not just utility billing, but ambulance or...
Ambulance, they're working through HIPAA.
Okay.
So we don't know on ambulance billing.
Okay.
But fines and things such as that, we can use the same system.
Like police fine, traffic.
Right. I think we'll start again with kind of going with the utility, get ourselves into the system, then start working with the police, how they collect theirs. I did mention the ambulance billing whenever the representative was in our office, and he said he would take that back and just see where their attorneys are on it, but you have to work through all of that extra.
But we'll continue to go through our normal process.
Oh, yes.
This will not be our first resort.
We have to go through our normal process. We have to utilize all the typical ways we go about collecting. But as a final step, the state of Illinois is trying to give local governments money that they know that they're owed.
We need trustee approval to do this. Could we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Randy. I'm sorry, Ms. Herman, anything else?
Question, would this include items like liens on property that we have to make from time to time where there's an unpaid assessment, or is this related strictly to services?
I believe, and I would have to look into that a little bit more if we are, if we can do it on a line, I think we would have to choose which way we would want to go. You know, a lien, we're not going to collect until they sell.
Right.
So, versus if we submit this to the state, maybe our chances are better if they get a refund. It's kind of, you have to take one of the two, so.
No, I, not a major issue, it's kind of curiosity whether or not there may be some advantages or disadvantages, if we can work that out. I support it.
Any other questions?
Doug?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on my list is Resolution Number 2-13, a resolution committing funds for the Building Addition Fund. If you remember back when we created, when we were working on the fiscal year 13 budget, we had decided at that time that we were going to create a building addition fund to begin saving for the possibility of one day adding on to Village Hall. I think we all kind of knew there are some issues that will have to be addressed in the near, and not in the near future, just in the future. And according to the provisions of Gatsby 54, which is, comes kind of from our auditors, we have to have a resolution establishing this fund formally, that we formally commit the funds for this purpose in order to show it on our financial statements. Now, we can do anything internally. This is basically to show it broken out and saying, this is what the board wanted to do. We did the same thing for the Fire and Paramedic Equipment Fund, so you'll see it whenever you look at our financial statements, so that is broken out. Setting aside these funds does not mean that we have to add on, it only means that we're looking ahead and trying to make plans to address issues that we foresee. And if the village decides they no longer want to do this, it just takes, they just take the same action to reverse it.
Should we approve this? It in no way authorizes the construction of a new facility.
No.
Or the hiring of engineers to draw pictures of same?
Correct.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any more questions?
I do. When we referred to it as Building Addition Fund, we're not, this is any building addition fund? Any, any facility?
Well, when we started it, I think we called it the Building Addition Fund, just...
And we always sort of effectively knew it was, I mean, Village Hall.
We thought Village Hall, we just never specified as we started doing it. A lot of times with these things, we try not to get extremely specific because it's in our accounting system, so we want it to be something that maybe we could use later down the road.
Sure.
You know what I mean? If we decided to move a different way. But in that budget, that is what we called it.
Okay.
Would just building fund be better?
We could call it building fund.
I mean, that way it's not tied to an addition.
That's where I was going with that. I was wondering, it would allow a little more flexibility of that, should we go a different, or another higher priority comes up in the meantime, for another facility, a need or renovation or whatever, that, that's what I guess I was asking, is are the funds able to be used for any facility, or is it specific to Village Hall then?
This isn't specific to Village Hall.
I didn't see that in there, but that's all I wanted to clarify.
It's just the building, we just called it the Building Addition Fund.
So it is flexible in that sense.
Basically, you all decide what we use these funds for.
I just wanted, I didn't want to handcuff us if there was another priority or emergency or a need at another facility, but that's what I hear you're saying, is it's a building fund, not necessarily restricted to one building.
Right. We didn't call it the Village Hall Addition or anything such as that.
Even though that's been our project.
That was when we started this, when we decided to put the $200,000 aside, kind of start saving.
Sure.
That was what our thought was at that time.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Call and...
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
We're honored tonight to have the Deputy Chief with us.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporate counsel?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works?
We have several items tonight, Your Honor. First of which, I'd like to ask for acceptance of a bid for an EnviroSite CCTV pipe inspection crawler in the amount of $93,925, and award of contract for same to a key equipment and supply company.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Newhouse.
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
We have discussed this previously, have we not, in the merits of the ability to use the, I'm sure everybody understands out there might be watching on television, this is a device that allows us to examine sewer and water lines, or I guess presumably any kind of pipeline.
any kind of pipeline, for cracks, damage, otherwise, and it's significantly cost, significantly cheaper in the end than digging up and taking apart, and it's a, it's a cost-reducing maintenance piece of maintenance equipment.
Yes. It's mainly used for sanitary and storm, but it's preventative maintenance is the first thing, but also remember when we do these subdivisions, all that, we usually don't have to have the contractor work too hard to put our sewer in correctly because we are always going to follow it in the end with this, but just using that as an example, this is a very important tool to what we do in Public Works.
Any more questions? Call it.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Dobbs?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Next item.
Next item, I'm asking for acceptance of a bid for a John Deere eight twenty-five I, basically a gator, John Deere gator, for the wastewater treatment department in the amount of $15,216.66, an award of contract for same to cross implement incorporated.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Dobbs? Any questions or comments? There being none, call it.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Dobbs?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
And lastly, in your packages, the Public Works recap for the month of May. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
If anyone has questions on that, they can just give you a call.
Yep.
Planning and zoning.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Belsley?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dobbs?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Hare?
Nothing tonight, I'll be speaking a little bit later.
Okay. Trustee Herman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Kaufman?
Just one item, talking about the plaza locations, just so the board knows, the Plum Street site, we haven't spent any money, we haven't had a board meeting, we discussed about the possibility of taking out Plum Street, I think when the board looks at it, if they decide to look at it, it might be wise just to leave Plum Street as it is. So I just want to give that bit of information, but no monies has been spent on that. That's all I have.
Trustee Newhouse?
One item, Your Honor, which trustee Hare and I will address together, and we may request some amplification from Ms. Yule, who's here tonight from the Economic Development Council. This relates to a recommendation to make a ninety percent tax rebate, property tax rebate, to Morton Auto Auction. And I just want to give a little brief history here and get us kind of all on the same page, and then we'll let Mr. Hare kind of go into some of the details. But trustees will remember, many of us will, I think, that some time ago, there was an initiative by the Morton Auto Auction to acquire some land, adjacent land, and expand the auto auction, and at that time, the reckoning was that the rebate amount ought to be fifty percent, consistent with number of other, I think we've had something like forty potential entries into the community that could have had assistance, and we've, I think, a total of five at this point have been recommended for assistance, and so at that point, fifty percent was about consistent with what we had been doing. Subsequently to that, the auto auction management came back to the village and provided some other information, which brought the argument within, let's say, within range of the criteria that we'd used for Monsanto. And after further review, the recommendation is, calculation by the Economic Development Council and the recommendation to the board is that we go ahead and make that rebate ninety percent. Now, what that means is, and again, I'll let trustee Hare go into a little more detail on this, but what that means is that we get all of the tax revenue we're already getting from the existing site, and we will get an increase in revenue from the empty land that they will inquire, acquire, but the remainder, that ninety percent will be deferred for five years, at which point we will then get all of it, and it's a substantial increase. As it turns out, after investigation, there's some significant arguments for making the increase. Auto auction serves eleven hundred dealers from seven states, there's a high degree of traffic, forty overnight hotel stays weekly with the auction, significant payroll, which is going to increase, and, and some capital investment on, significant capital investment on their part. So we, and, and in addition to that, the gasoline, food, and other consumption that pays revenue into the, into the community. So there's some, there's some significant argument, I think, for extending that level of rebate. Historically, we have looked at these one-on-one because we have not had a formula in place, like many other communities, that allows us to address any entrant into the community that feels that a rebate is necessary or desirable, and then be able to look at it on the basis of certain criteria and say either you qualify or you don't, or you qualify for X amount, or Y amount, or Z amount. We were close to having something like that a couple of years ago, and I think we're now in a position where we can come up with an agreement, all the taxing bodies will agree to, and that will take it out of the case-by-case administration. But in the meantime, we need to move ahead with this particular consideration. This will be first reading, because there is a required legal document that we must have in place, the description of property in order to finalize it. So at this point, I'll ask Mr. Hare to kind of review some of the details, and if necessary, we'll get some amplification from Ms. Yule.
I think we've covered a lot of them there, I'm not sure how much more we want to go. Just if you look at some of the information, the projected cost, around about a $1.5 million capital investment on behalf of the Morton Auto Auction. So it is a significant-sized project, which would be comparable to some of the other abatements that we've, that we've had over the years. Steve did mention this, that there really are two underlying issues. There's the specific issue of the Morton Auto Auction, plus there is probably the need at this point to draw a, draw up a program of a formula that we can use so we can have some parallelism, or something to work off of here so that we don't have to go back each time to look at these, look at these things on an individual case. So that's something that we're going to try to work on, on the EDC, through the committees and the board, the EDC Board. Looking at other communities, Washington, Pekin, East Peoria, but also on a broader scope, there's also other committees and boards that meet throughout the country in the Midwest, that we can look at what works and, you know, what doesn't work out there, and how that applies to Morton. So that's, from that standpoint, it is, we're going to see some forward motion there on the, and when we say that, obviously, we're talking about intergovernmental agreements between the taxing bodies, which we have ourselves, the Park District, and the School District, obviously being the biggest one with that. So I guess, kind of when we go over this, if there's, if there's any questions about it, or if we need to have a motion and then ask questions about that part of it, really, I guess, to go on an individual basis, because Steve, you really covered, you know, kind of most of the issues that we, that we would really want to bring up, so.
I think all we need for first reading is a consensus, and there is one arithmetic error on here, if you look at your summary sheet, the bottom is total revenue, so after the abatement period, I think it comes out to about $57,000 per year subsequently, so that, I want to make a correction, everybody needs the details, we can, Sam and I, or Ms. Yule can go into the arithmetic of it, but it is a, it is a long-term net benefit to the community.
If you locate here.
So if we can, we can get consensus tonight, then we can proceed first July meeting with the approval.
Do we have any more questions? Could we call for a consensus? Can we get an idea of, we got consensus for this?
Yeah, I'm, just, I guess, other comment, I'm sorry. But I am encouraged to hear that there's a plan or a formula being worked on that can be brought before the board in the near future, and, and, you know, this sort of brings it home, too, where we have a summary of recent projects, and each one of them was given their due deliberation, and, and as you can see, it's sort of all over the place there with, you know, how, what we ended up with for a sentence, and so I think it's only good policy for us to have something in place going forward in the future, and all the other public bodies know where they stand, and the business community, and the EDC and the chamber will have direction, more clear direction from us as well, so I'm glad to hear that, and look forward to hearing the progress of that.
And there's, just to kind of further that, Steve, there's, there's two things happening there, is one is, we obviously need to have a, whether you want to call it a metric, a formula, or whatever, to actually lay out whether it's job creation, total dollars spent, also the retention of jobs, the percentage of the overall abatement towards the, towards the cost of the project, you know, all of these things come into play, and it's nice to have a metric, so if something is outside of that, and we need to consider that, we can really point to a specific part of that that gives us an indication of why we actually went that route. Today, we don't have that, that's why we're kind of in the situation where we're at. Part of the idea is, is that Morton Auto Auction has been a member of the Morton community here for a long time, and is a, somebody that, you know, we want to do the right thing for, so that's a big part of it.
Just one more thing, we are working with the Park District and the School Board to have a formula that we can all work with?
Yeah, we're, Jennifer can talk of this, you were at a roundtable discussion here in recent, in recent months, the community, there's a, is a community outside of Kansas City, am I saying that right? Yeah, that they actually have a metric set up of, hey, here's the, here's what we use to do it now. It's a little bit different, because I think it starts at a $5 million project, is that...
It's at over $2 million, just.
Okay. So, we're not necess, you know, when you look at, we've only got, you know, one of those projects, kind of in excess of that, but we can still use the jobs retained, additional jobs, some of these, those are just examples of several metrics that we could actually put in place and try to develop, have input from, you know, because one of the things that, you know, our board here wouldn't necessarily take into consideration, but the school board might, is what would the impact on the enrollment at the schools be? What is, what is that going to mean? So there, obviously, each board is going to have a little bit of a different thought process as to why they're, would want a certain metric in place, or what they would like to consider with that. And on the EDC, Dr. Lindsay Hall is on, is on the EDC, so we will be able to have input from all of these different areas, which is, which is a very positive thing.
And Washington has one, Pekin, they're more simplistic than the example that trustee Hare cited, but, but they are typically used, and it will be highly valuable, we get it in place.
Just, just as an example, Pekin, Washington, and East Peoria have a flat 100% abatement for five years. Pekin's the only one that has a stipulation, and it's a $25,000 or above capital investment. So when we talk about competition, that's what we're talking about, and we just, looking at those, those are just the ones in Tazewell County, which in some cases, we actually maybe want to look at a little bit broader scope if we're competing for, for companies and corporations that are, that are going to be coming into the area from, from different states, so.
That's all I have.
Are you satisfied that you have everyone's support?
Yes, yes, thank you. And I was closed by noting for everyone that end of this week, they start getting shorter again. Cheer everybody up.
We're going to have to go to closed session again for an HR issue. Anyone who's here can leave if they wish, because we're not going to take any action when it's over. Matter of fact, the entire staff can leave if they wish, there won't be any action. But I wouldn't like a motion to go into closed session. But... So we can't do it?
Never mind.
I thought that's all it took.
Yeah, they require, even more, you'd have to have the specific section under which they're...
All right, I get to leave with you.
We all do.
Does have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.